This conference will now be recorded.
All public comments from the agenda items will be taken at a specified public comment portion of the meeting unless otherwise noted or as indicated. To ensure that all interested parties have an opportunity to participate and maintain order during the city council's meeting. The following public guideline or the following guideline applies to all public comments. At all times, I will preside over and control the meeting. Individual speakers may speak for three minutes. If I bend my gavel, you should stop speaking. You may have some more time. It means that everybody knows where they're at and stands three minutes. We will have on the overhead projector a kind of a countdown clock. They'll go from three, two, one. And if you're out of time, let me know. If you agree with prior test, that's one minute to say so. Do not launch additional comments or information through which the council can further their deliberations. A member of the public may not speak more than once during the public comment portion of the meeting unless called upon by the meeting. Clarify prior test. The policy of the mayor or the council to engage in a dialogue during the public comment portion of the meeting. Rather, the public comment portion of the meeting is intended to allow the public to address the mayor and council and provide input regarding the agenda items. So this is for the items that are agreed with what we've got for the lovers and ladies. All questions must be addressed to you needs and have no further questions to be approached by person. No person may speak if the council is not called upon by the speaker. That I call it must be addressed council from the podium, which is right here. We also have a council member that is attending the meeting remotely. So I ask you to speak in the microphone so that the computer can... To allow the process of deliberation among council members, the order is that after the public comment portion of the meeting is exposed, the upper part of the public press moment will be permitted. So on this one, we do have a word section active. If this goes wrong, we'll go ahead and cancel that and move that word section through later day. There is a lot of people make sure everybody's here. First, if the other life objects and council items are out of order and may be removed by my order, however, so rest determine whether this person is out of order or subject to removal from the meeting. We understand that public issues may be emotionally charged. We need respectful lovers, then, and the outcome of this process will be more productive as we work towards solutions, that's for all. Remember, reasonable equal and mistreaty would have to be listed. With that, we'll go ahead and begin. We'll call this January 30th meeting of the Sedalia City Council order. Roll call, please.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Here.
Bogus.
Here.
Hiller.
Here.
Cross.
Here.
Foster. Foster.
Here, my camera's not...
And Bliss.
Here.
Okay, thank you, James. Before we begin, we're going to go ahead and have staff go ahead and run through and give us a rundown of how we got to this juncture. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm going to do an initial staff presentation, kind of talk about where we've been and where we are at this point and the purpose for tonight's meeting. So the following information is intended to serve as a background and give a better foundation, a strategic foundation to better understand why the current zoning amendments have been proposed. So the first issue is, how did we get here? In September of 2021, an application was filed for a building permit for a facility designed to provide various services for the homeless community under one roof. These services, which are designed to address many issues and concerns for individuals and families that are at risk of becoming homeless or who are experiencing homelessness, are commonly called transitional services due to their role of transitioning homeless individuals and families out of that condition. After review, the city realized that it was without authority to issue the requested building permit because the current zoning codes do not list most of the transitional services as a permitted use. As this council is aware, for approximately 100 years, Missouri cities are authorized by state statutes to enact and enforce zoning regulations. Zoning ordinances are either prohibitive or permissive in nature. Prohibitive ordinances assume that all uses are allowed, then list for each zoning district those uses that are not allowed. As you can imagine, it would be difficult to comprehend all the possible uses before they have been employed by a property owner. For this reason, most cities employ permissive zoning, which assumes that no uses are allowed unless they are expressly listed in the zoning ordinance. Generally, if the city's ordinance lists uses that are permitted, then those not listed are not permitted. This is based on over 80 years of Missouri case law, beginning with Cagle versus Holcamp in 1941 and includes several, probably half a dozen cases, like Freezen versus the city of Pagedale in 1995. Changes to the city zoning code may be initiated by private applicants or by the city itself. Changes are typically made as text amendments or rezonings. Text amendments change what the regulations say. Rezones change which regulations apply to which properties. On May 4th, 2022, this council met in a special meeting to consider whether the city should consider adding transitional services to its permitted uses in the zoning code. The council authorized and directed the mayor and city staff to create a transitional services committee to develop a draft ordinance to address transitional services. An eight-member transitional services committee was formed, including professionals working with homelessness issues and members of the community. The transitional services committee met five times between May 26th and August 18th. With our assistance, they created a draft ordinance, which you received, which was sent to the planning commission as a part of their packet materials when they took a look at that. The ordinance, the proposed ordinance coming from the transitional services committee to the planning commission created 16 new definitions specific to transitional services, and among those, they created 12 new land uses to make the city zoning code more expansive by enunciating and clarifying permitted transitional services for transitional uses. They also created provisions for emergency shelters, and that draft ordinance was delivered to the planning and zoning commission for their statutorily required review. On October 12th, the planning and zoning commission held a public hearing just like the one that we are having this evening to receive the input of the community before embarking upon their work. The planning commission met again on November 2nd, December 7th, and January 4th to review, edit, and refine the proposed transitional services ordinance. On January 4th, the commission voted unanimously to recommend this council to approve the proposed ordinance that is the subject of tonight's hearing. So at everyone, at the place where everyone is sitting in the audience this evening, a copy of the, what's called a clean copy of the ordinance was distributed to the members of the public. The, when, at the January 4th meeting, the final revisions that the commission had suggested that staff would make would make were gone over in a redline form. The planning commission agreed with the changes that were made in the redline form, and so this just accepts those changes. And that is what the commission, what the council is now considering this evening is that ordinance that was passed along by the, by the commission. So what are the goals for tonight's meeting regarding the transitional services ordinance? First and foremost, as the mayor indicated, the goal this evening is not to have the council vote on this matter. The mayor and city administrators set up this meeting as a special meeting as a public hearing to allow the council to hear a presentation on the proposed ordinance and to hold a statutorily required public hearing on the matter. It would be completely appropriate for the council to discuss the proposal and input received from the public and even direct staff to provide additional information or make suggested changes if that is desired. Voting on the issue tonight is not advised, and we did not notice the meeting up for you to actually vote on the matter tonight as this is a very important topic and deserves additional time for contemplation and review of the issue. So what are the next steps after this evening? To a great extent, that answer is up to the council. Tentatively, city staff plan to put the consideration of this ordinance on the council's March 6th agenda for consideration and vote. That would be to allow time to hear the comments of the public this evening and present you with information regarding that as well as, you know, other information that was submitted to the transitional services committee and the planning commission as we've gone through this process to review that and give you adequate time to review that information and see what questions you may have from your constituents.
February.
Actually, March.
March.
Because February 6th turnaround would require essentially that package to be put together in a matter of like two days, three days to give you enough time to look at it. So I talked to the mayor and the city administrator today, and so we're recommending that we bring it forward on March 6th if the council agrees. So before we start our presentation, before I start the presentation of the ordinance, does the council have any questions about what we've reviewed so far? Everybody's good?
We're good.
So now I'll go through a brief summary of the ordinance. So again, so what issues do these amendments address? As I mentioned earlier, currently, the city zoning code has no provision for an entire class of uses collectively considered transitional services. This includes a wide range of uses and activities intended to support people currently experiencing or at the risk of experiencing homelessness. These include emergency shelters, short and long-term shelters, temporary and permanent housing. Because the code does not currently permit most of these uses as a primary use, they are presumed to be prohibited throughout the city. This is obviously an untenable situation for the city, its residents, and for those members of the community who want to provide this much needed support. So what are the amendments? As we go through the ordinance, the ordinance is set up and ordinances, when they're passed by the legislation, there are actually a piece of legislation that has its own sections. Those sections are then utilized to change the city code of ordinances, which is actually the existing law that you could see online for changes. The references to the ordinance sections are usually very low numbers, one through, I think, 15 on this one. But when you hear references to the city code, you might hear numbers like 64 dash something because that, chapter 64 is where the zoning resides. Okay. So as I mentioned previously, the intent of this ordinance is to add uses to the zoning code. This begins with definition section of the zoning code. Section 1 proposes 17 new defined uses and concepts to the code. There was one added at the planning commission process simply to make a, to take, I think it was a couple of types of shelters, I believe, and put them into under, you know, one definition, so it added a definition that way for ease of, of, you know, you don't have a lot of repetitive words in the ordinance to go through. Really, you know, that's why there's one additional from what I said before. This addition to the definition section creates a source and an origin for these uses to be included in the permitted uses in the zoning districts throughout the country. Sections 2 through 9 of the ordinance adds those uses to the individual district. So specifically, section 2... So we'll retitle. Section 1 is where we start to put the various definitions. How did I click it on my screen? It would show up. It doesn't show up. Sorry. Maybe I misunderstood. Okay, sorry. So the ordinance has, the whereas clauses are recital, and then we talked about section 1 here, modifies section 64 dash 1 of the code, which are the definitions under the zoning code, and it provides those 17 additional definitions to provide various services that extend, assuming that the ordinance would be approved, which would then be allowed in the city according to the remainder of the ordinance itself. So as I mentioned before, sections 2 through 9 add the uses to the individual district. Section 2 amends the R1 district by adding emergency housing, community residential facility, permanent support housing, and transitional housing to the list of uses. Section 3 amends District R1 by adding, what I would call an unenumerated paragraph, which allows day shelters, schooling shelters, and warming shelters in churches and publicly owned and operated community buildings in the R1 district. Section 4 amends the R2, which is, so when I say R1, that's typically single family. R stands for residential, R1 means the family unit, and as we go up, those uses get more intense. So in R2, it'd be more of like a duplex type zoning, and so that adds community residential facilities to the list of uses there. Section 5 amends the R3 district, which are the apartment house district, to allow community residential facilities in those districts or in properties that are zoned, that zoning category. Section 6 amends the C0, which is non-resale commercials, to add community center, day shelter, emergency shelter, emergency housing, support services, temporary cooling shelters, temporary warming shelters. Section 7 amends the C0 district to change the cumulative zoning clause in that existing ordinance, which is that section D1, to say, "Any use permitted in R3 except that permanent supportive housing and transitional housing shall not be permitted without a special use permit." Section 8 is amending the C2 as a general business district by adding day shelters, emergency shelters, emergency housing, support services, temporary cooling shelters, temporary warming shelters, and transient dwelling houses to the list of accepted uses in that district in the cumulative zoning clause in D1. Section 9 amends C3, the commercial district, which adds day shelter, emergency shelter, emergency housing, support services, temporary cooling shelters, and temporary warming shelters. Section 10 amends the M1 or the light industrial district by adding community centers, day shelters, emergency housing, emergency shelter, emergency housing, permanent supportive housing, support services, temporary cooling shelters, temporary warming shelters. And then section 11 is the last of the specific zoning district provisions, where it amends the heavy industrial district by adding a day shelter, subject to a special use permit, an emergency shelter, subject to a special use permit, emergency housing, special use permit, support services with a special use permit, temporary cooling shelter with a special use permit, and temporary warming shelter with a special use permit. Sections 12 and 13, and I apologize, you see here on the copy that came over to you, it was missed that there were duplicate section 12, so really anything after this first 12, we'll just add one to it. The correct section 12 will add special use permit requirements for day shelters. It'll say that special use permit requirements are required for day shelters, emergency shelters, temporary cooling shelters, temporary warming shelters, and in the R3 district only, support services that would be provided in that R3 district. Again, 12 was duplicated, so I'm going to read it as the correct number, you know, again, I apologize for that. But, you know, please note that from here on out, the section, actually on the copy that you have, both on your screens and at your table, is going to be plus one from this point on. So section 13 adds a new section to the code, which is provisions related to homelessness. This is a comprehensive section providing minimum requirements for compliance with city building and fire safety, water and sewage provisions, and size and space requirements. Topics addressed in this section include the proximity limit to schools and daycare, business licensing, space requirement, safety and maintenance, codes of conduct, site access, traffic, facility management, drug and alcohol use, dispersal of life, facility, shelter requirements. It does provide for a notice and hearing process that in the event that the holder of a special use permit were to run afoul of that special use permit, they would be provided notice, given an opportunity to fix the issue. And if not, before that special use permit could be revoked, it would come before this council as a public hearing from that standpoint. And then we also in section 13 address the possible overlap with the city's emergency powers. Section, subsection C has provisions specifically related to emergency shelters. These provisions include building safety, occupancy, and parking standards as well as criteria for manning. And then ultimately... Take a minute to kind of go slowly through these. I shouldn't have been scrolling. Okay, as I mentioned, section C has specific provisions related to emergency shelters there. There's the notice and hearing provision. And then we address the emergency powers to make sure that this wouldn't interfere if there was an event of a, you know, a major fire or tornado or something like that. And then finally, sections what should be 14, 15, and 16 are just kind of boilerplate ordinance language that deal with the fact that we're not just creating a completely new law, we're putting this into a existing form. Mr. Mayor, with that, that concludes the staff presentation of the proposed ordinance. Again, this was submitted to the council by the planning commission. It was a unanimous vote to recommend approval of that. But you are the legislative body, and you ultimately control the language of statutes, or I'm sorry, of ordinances that you had passed. And then we, you'll go through that process. First, we're required by law to hear from the public, and that was the purpose of tonight's meeting, is to be the public here.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Anybody like to step to the podium, state your name, your address, and you have three minutes to address the count. Don't be shy.
Good evening. My name's Lori Ward. Mayor, nobody thinks I'm shy, so I figured I would step up here. Ladies and gentlemen, I submitted some information to you last Friday with regard to this ordinance. I have spent a substantial period of time. I've gone to all the planning and zoning board meetings. I've reviewed it. I've given input. I did this at the request of the then Planning and Zoning Board Chairman Kevin Way, who asked me to give me some review. For background, ladies and gentlemen, I'm a lawyer. I have no clients here. I'm just here because I'm a member of the community, and I got interested in it based on some comments that was in the newspaper. And from there, I'm like, I'm a lawyer. I can try to help. The first thing I will say is lawyers disagree, okay? And I got to say, I know Mr. Lauber, and I disagree on some of the things that he's stated here, but that's okay. Lawyers do, okay? Because of that, I'm going to ask you guys, your job is to check. You don't have to believe me or the things I mentioned in my responses. You don't have to believe Mr. Lauber. Do your own due diligence. In that letter, I did mention to you that the Lauber Law Firm has been paid substantial amounts of money by the city. In 2022, they were paid $328,000. The more discussion and more changes we make to this, the more they get paid. I've been paid nothing. I'm just here as a member of the community. But I want you guys to think about this. Is this physically responsible for this bill or this ordinance to be passed? The homeless population in Sedalia is around 258 people. That's less than 2% of the citizens. But look at all the time and resources that we have spent on this and will moving forward. But you don't believe me. You can believe city council. But remember, there's an attorney from the National Homeless Association who has said, "This ordinance is not well-written." I believe this ordinance is not well-written, and I don't say that to pick on anybody. I'm just trying to give you an input and overview, okay? I can go through lots of details, but we don't have time in three minutes. But do your own due diligence. If this is hard to understand or it seems like it's confusing, it won't be upheld in the courts because that's how this stuff works. It was nice to hear that all of these resources came about and have been devoted to one project, the Mercy Rest Project. That's the first thing I still don't understand, what the Mercy Rest Project has done that is not being supported by the city to put it in place. And perhaps I'm mistaken on those activities, okay? But you guys, please do your own due diligence. If the public would like to hear the comments I've provided to the board, I'd like to talk to you.
And Ms. Ward, for the record, can I get your address?
Yes, my address is 514 South Ohio here in Sedalia.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Julian Martin. My address is 30192 Highway M, Sedalia, Missouri. And I'm here this evening as the chair of Pillars of Pettis County, which is an organization that's been working for a while to try to develop housing resources and support individuals and families here in Pettis County. As part of our work, we've made connections with several organizations that have successful programs. Two programs are located in Springfield. And what has contributed to the success of these programs is the fact that the city of Springfield has worked closely with these agencies and not placed roadblocks on the way. My question this evening is, what is this ordinance trying to fix? I certainly understand the need for, the opportunity for the public to communicate and to express their concerns if anything is going to be in their neighborhood. And I do commend the council for at least clarifying what goes into each of the zoning. However, when you look at section 64 dash 127, there is no other place in section 64 dash 124, which is the special use permit section, that requires the extensive management plan, the oversight, everything else that's in that section that makes it almost impossible to attract resources to this community. If I was an outside investor, and we've spoken to these organizations that have good programs, who's going to want to invest in a community where just because someone didn't like the way, perhaps, that an organization was providing service for homeless people, that it could all be taken away? It could all be destroyed? How does that sound to an outside funder? Too often in public forums, I have heard... Too often in public forums, I have heard people who are in need of homeless services, people who are at risk, and it's not just people who are homeless, it's people who, for whatever reason, don't have a safe place to live, referred to as "those people." And when I hear that, I think of the phrase, "There but for the grace of God go I." Any of us could possibly find ourselves in the situation in which we need assistance. And what I would ask is that you please seriously look at section 6427, and make sure that truly is necessary to address a situation where truly are homeless people more dangerous than all of the other things that are permitted in section 64-124. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, perfect timing. All right. Amen.
Seth Nabels, 24510 Oak Grove Lane, Lot 19, Sedalia, Missouri. So I'm way out of my league here, I just want to thank you all for letting me speak. I understand that this seems to be about the Mercy Rest Stop, and like I said, I don't know, I don't understand most of what you all said, and it's dash this and code that. I'm just not, this is my first time in a city hall meeting, and so anyway, I'm just going to step into the area that I do understand, and I just want to thank you all for your time, for your service to this town, and you have a hard job, and praise God, that's not my job, because that'd be tough. So I just wanted to share a couple scriptures, and the first one is Matthew 22, this is New King James Bible, New King James Version, Matthew 22, verse 37 through 40. Jesus said to him, "You shall love the Lord your God with all your heart, with all your soul, and with all your mind; this is the first and greatest commandment. And the second is like it: you shall love your neighbor as yourself. On these two commandments hang all the law and the prophets." I want to share one more scripture with you real quick, the parable of the good Samaritan. This is Luke, chapter 10, starting in verse 25 through 37. "And behold, a certain lawyer stood up and passed to him, saying, 'Teacher, what shall I do to inherit eternal life?'" He said to him, "What is written in the law? What is your reading of it?" So he answered and said, "You shall love the Lord your God with all your heart, with all your soul, and with all your strength, and with all your mind, and love your neighbor as yourself. And he said to him, 'You have answered rightly; do this, and you will live.'" But when he, wanting to justify himself, said to Jesus, "And who was my neighbor?" Then Jesus answered and said, "A certain man went down from Jerusalem to Jericho, and fell among thieves, who stripped him of his clothing, wounded him, and departed, leaving him half-dead. Now by chance a certain priest came down that road, and he saw him, and passed by on the other side, likewise a Levite. When he arrived at that place, came and looked, and passed by on the other side. But when the Samaritans he journeyed, came where he was, and he saw him, he had compassion. So he went on and bandaged his wounds, pouring on oil and wine. He set on his own animal, brought him back to an inn, and took care of him. On the next day, when he departed, he took out two denarii, gave them to the innkeeper, and said to him, 'Take care of him, and whatever more you spend, when I come again, I will repay you.'" So which one of these three do you think was the neighbor to, who fell among the thieves? And he said, "He who showed mercy to him." Then Jesus said to him, "Go and do likewise." What I know is that there's a lot of people praying for you guys, and they're going to continue to do that, for wisdom for you all. And again, I thank you, and I know God lays on my heart that we need a homeless shelter here, and not where they just sit around, but we're going to put them to work in the community, restore lives through Christ. Thank you all for your time, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanne. All right, we got...
Turk Martin, 30192 Highway M, Sedalia. Most of you know me as the Chairman of CASA, and in the proposed ordinance, I want to tell you how much I appreciate you putting the community residential centers under R two. I think that's a very appropriate thing that you've done. And I'm going to stop on CASA now, because I'm also in charge of the warming shelter, the property of warming shelter, we have a group, we don't have a specific top person. Mrs. Ward spoke about numbers, the most we've ever had for a warming shelter is twenty-five, and the average is usually around, well, last night we had eleven, to give you an idea. Two of those were dropped, one was dropped off by the city police, it was a problem with alcohol, I think Buffalo Officer did just out the door, the officer knew him, picked him up and brought him over to us, don't have a problem with that. But there was another fellow that was brought in early this morning in a wheelchair, Buffalo dismissed him, and he had broken ribs, incontinent, very, very poor health, unable to maneuver without help, basically, although they said that he could walk, but he urinated in the middle of the floor, and... And our problem is, where do we send these people? Because I, actually, my wife Joanne called the social worker at Buffalo and said, you know, what's going on here? You know, where do you send somebody if the warming shelter wasn't open? The answer was, I don't know. And our problem is, we're showing volunteers. Tomorrow morning, we'll probably wind up having to close, because we don't have anybody to man the warming shelter during the day, it'll be open again tomorrow night. And hopefully, maybe we can, through God's will, find somebody to help us, but it's a very small population, and we don't know cooling shelter at all, it's just the warming shelter. We've had three deaths since Sedalia over the years from freezing death, I mean, that's what we're trying to prevent, the sum of life that we can save is important. And so, as others have spoken, and will address particular parts, I would ask you to please consider the numbers versus what, you know, really trying to limit. And the other thing is, perhaps you have to do a little more research on the programs that are working, Independence, Springfield, Branson, the Springfield program is a national model, and I would ask that, if you look at those, I've used my time, I thank you very much for your concerns.
Thank you, Turk. Just a point of clarification, do you know where the man, I mean, do you know where he came from that had the...
I don't. I don't. All I know is he was fresh out of Buffalo, and talked to a couple of police officers, she's not known yet. Apparently, he left voluntarily out of the assisted living facility. That's about all the information that I have. We called the hotline for the Department of Social Services, they sent somebody over this afternoon, tried to convince him to go back into the facility. But the problem is, is if he refuses, the Department of Social, of Social Services cannot take possession of him, so he can refuse to go, and I don't know, I honestly don't know what we're going to do if he doesn't decide to go somewhere.
Thank you, Turk.
You're welcome.
Hello, everybody, I'm David Miller, retired First Sergeant in the Army, retired of this community. I'm on the board for the embassy and volunteer with the embassy restoration house for men, and I'm currently an employee at the Refuge at the House on Main for the homeless. So if you want to know where the homeless go, they go to Warrensburg. Talked to two people today, that I was like, you know what, I could have taken them to work with me, because when I leave here, I'm going there, and that makes me sad, that I have to go somewhere else to get help, and I don't know everything and understand everything that these laws do, and you guys probably understand better, but there has to be a question of, or making it easier to help the people that need help, or harder, and either one, why are we doing those things? I've seen and witnessed what, and it's going to be out there, but I pray, I pray for the city, and I've been praying for the city for most of the time that I've been here, and the things that have been talked about, for this city the destiny, for this city is that this city, it's called to be a house of devotion, this place to be a city that's blessed, a city that even when curtains get dark everywhere else, that this city will be a beacon of light, and a beacon of light is supposed to draw people in, and not drive the hopeless and the broken away. And I hope that that's the kind of city you want to be, not the kind of city that when we look back, we send the hopeless and broken somewhere else, rather than some, a city that was helping people, and it's hard, I've been in the business, it's hard to help people, because sometimes they make it, and sometimes they don't make it, right? But there's people in this room who've been in jail and drugs, probably homeless and other things, and I've seen God transform them, right? Hopefully, for everybody here that believes in Jesus, God has transformed them and taken them from something that was broken, and made something good, and made them productive members of this society and of this town, and I believe that's the destiny God has for this town, and that's what He wants for His people to do. He commands His people, be careful that we do not legislate against what God has commanded His people to do, and that's not a threat, we're called to do it, we're commanded. Oh, I love Him, and I've thought about bringing out of my house, I really have. He's asked if He can plug Himself into my outlet, right? Whether it's during the day when it's cold, or it's at night, but I don't even understand legislation, would I even be legally allowed to bring somebody into my home? A hopeless guy, homeless guy, could I even bring him to my house, because of rules we haven't played? But the Lord commands me that I should do these things, are we putting rules in place to keep that? And I don't know, I want, I'm one of those ones, I'm with my brother, I want a homeless shelter in this city. Not just a Mercy Rest Stop, a transitional housing, I've been in one, I'm working there, haven't been there long, and I've seen it help some, right? And there's some that they realize they don't want to transition, we don't welcome them back. Thank you for listening to me, bless you all, and I pray with my brothers that you hear from the Lord, and we actually manage to honor him and help this city do what God wants.
Thank you, David.
My name's Steve Graff, I live at 1520 West Broadway. I've lived in Sedalia for forty-two years, and I've spent my time here as a social worker and as a pastor of a church. I remember in the late nineties, when I was working for Pettis County Community Partnership, that there was a study done of cities in Missouri, and Sedalia was selected as the town, the city that had the most what they called "social capital." Maybe some of you remember that study. The study said that this is the place with a heart, this is a place where people work together, this is a place where people help people. I would urge you, as you take on the daunting task of trying to figure out exactly how this all should lay out, to remember who we are and live up to our personality. We've already been called to live up to who we are spiritually, and I agree with that, but I ask you to consider also that we have built ourselves a reputation nationally, as a matter of fact, in many circles, for a community that has a heart, that cares, that reaches out, that takes care of itself, that has a human element to it, that's actually unsurpassed in our state. Live up to that reputation. Thank you so much for your time.
Steve, just a point of clarification, what was the year you said that study was done?
Late nineties, I can't tell you the exact one, ninety-seven, I'm going to guess. Jack Minjes, I think, still has a copy of that, if you know Jack.
Who?
Jack Minjes, what's the name of Jack's partner? Whatever they do. I'm not sure. I suppose the partnership probably still had one in files or something.
Okay, thank you, Steve.
Okay. Mayor, I do have three letters that we received yesterday, and the day, Friday, two from Deb Ehrman, one was her previous letter of October, and she followed that up with a letter Friday, and then Samantha Gilpin, who was on the advisory committee, also submitted a letter today to go into the record.
Okay. We'll hold those until the end. Joy Catherine.
Kathleen Boswell, 312 South Sneed. So for clarification, I have a couple questions, and if you can't give me an answer, I understand, but I would like you to at least think about the answers to them. Tonight, there is no specific location even being considered, right? This is just an ordinance that will cover the entire town and make it possible to control everything within the city limits. Would Mercy Rest Stop be considered a community residential facility in the way that it was originally planned and offered to the community?
So I don't have any direction as far as specific applicants that I could provide you right now, what we're doing is we're, this is the Transitional Services Ordinance, which is pretty broad.
And that's part of the issue, I think, it's so broad that I'm trying to figure out what things that we would try to offer and where they would fall into this. Would St. Patrick's Basement Warming Shelter be considered one of these residential, community residential facilities?
I believe instead it would just be a temporary warming shelter, the way I understand.
Okay. What about community cafe offering the free meals, and during the summer, they also open their doors so that people can use it for cooling during the day? Would they fall under this ordinance where they would have to have that at least annual inspection, and if they had a violation, having only ten business days to correct something?
That's something that we can discuss with staff in the work section.
Okay. This last December, we had that extreme cold, and people were at St. Patrick's Basements for twenty-four hours a day for several days, and as wonderful as it is that the church allows it to be used, there's no shower facilities, and I think most of you would not feel comfortable sleeping on a cot in a room with other people close by and no showers. Luckily, this year, there were no children, families with children there, it was just adults, so that made it a little bit better. I was stunned when I heard the amount of money that has been spent to consider all of this through the legal process, but you know what, if it's not a good ordinance, you can vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine.
My name is Jill White, I live at 27223 Green Road, Sedalia, Missouri, and I work at the Katie Depot as the site manager, and I feel a little bit out of place, I don't enjoy controversy at all, at all. And I can feel for everybody that's spoken so far, and from the heart, and I don't disagree with any of it, but I have another perspective that I have to cope with, and that's the Katie Depot, and what it is here for, as the place, visitors come to Sedalia to find out what Sedalia is all about, we are the welcome center. Folks that work in there all have a role to play to help promote Sedalia to people out of the area, to be helpful to our citizens that live here, and we do already have a pretty good issue with homeless, transient, vagrancy, all of those things are already an issue. Our major concern is that it's going to get increasingly difficult for us to handle it if there's a shelter such as Mercy Rest Stop, just directly across the street from us. We all know that that will bring more folks in, it just, it can't not, and our big concern is what do they do in the after hours, when they close the doors at five or six in the evening? Where are the next closest thing that has available seating, benches, picnic area, you know, a place to come in, we've got bathrooms for the trailhead, and we just want you to remember that we also have concerns, we hope that we can work this all out so that everybody can walk away happy and feel like the public is being served, but not at the detriment to anybody else. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, you just want to pass that to Jason or John?
Name's Gary Smith, and owner of the Shepherd's Place downtown here. I'm just, wanted to come tonight to kind of hear what the ordinance is, and I'm still greatly confused as, with spoken, it's like, wow. I'm just really looking at this community, a lot of strong supporters, business supporters, individuals in the community for several years, now I've been pouring forth money and dreams and visions to bring forth a place that will be good for this city and for the most destitute of our area. And I, I would even think that even, you know, I mentioned, I've been across, I know that the location has been suggested across there from the Depot, but it's, it might be that visitors come by and they'll say, wow, look at what this city does for the, for the least of those here, and making a way, making a vision, what a nice place, what a nice facility. And I think we'd be surprised that once that Mercy Stop actually gets put into effect, the changes it will make in people that attend there, but also in the community around them. I mean, it's a dream, it's a vision, it's something that's been planted in people's hearts. I'm just saying, don't hinder it, don't stop it from coming to pass. It's been two years now, it should have already been going this past year. And all the while we're waiting, it's hindering what I believe Sedalia could be. And I know there was, you know, I know there's been a lot of scripture brought up, and as a pastor, you know, I can't even, but think of in Matthew twenty-five, you know, it, the Lord, it's a judgment day, and people are gonna stand before Him and they're gonna say, what did, you know, I was hungry, you didn't give me nothing to eat, or thirsty, you didn't give me anything to drink, I was naked, you didn't clothe me, and you didn't visit me when I was in bondage. And they'll, they're gonna reply, well, we didn't see you like that, Lord, we didn't see you naked or hungry. Hey, when you didn't see it to the least of these, when you, when you didn't, when you did to the least of these, you did it to me. And I, be careful, man, I don't, I'd hate to stand before the judgment seat and be accountable for what I had an opportunity to do and I drug my feet or didn't even get it accomplished. There's a dream, there's a vision, there's a multitude, the funds have been poured into this, let it come to pass, let it come to pass quickly.
Thank you, Gary. Oh, Gary, for the record, can I get your address?
Oh, three oh five South Ohio.
Thank you. Okay, up next? Don't be shy, I know everybody came down here, you might as well get up there and speak, you got something to say.
That's where Christopherson, six oh seven West Sixth Street, Sedalia, Missouri. In the Bible, it says that you will have the poor with you always. There are so many places in the Bible where it declares things that scientists have now proven is true, such as the earth is not the center of the universe, that we revolve around the sun. That didn't get any, it didn't get scientifically proven until Copernicus realized it. And we have proof that, in the Bible, it says that running water is what cleans wounds. We didn't realize that's scientifically proven until around the Civil War era, when they were using still water to clean wounds. But in the Bible, it says running water cleans wounds, and people were dying of infection until they realized that running water, pure water, would do that. These are all things that are in the Bible, and we've been talking about the things in the Bible, that our city needs to follow after biblical principles, and that's how we can advance, that's how we can, as a society, advance further. Because when we fall into the things of this world, we allow the world to rule over us and to reign over us and to direct our path, and we no longer follow godly principles, then we fall into the, what Gary had said, the wrath of God, the judgment of God. We need to do things that are right for our community, right for our people, right for the least of these, as he's mentioned. We gotta take care of the people that are so needed, you know. I heard someone say one time that we're all like two or three poor choices or mistakes or misgivings away from being poor, being destitute, being afflicted, ill-treated, you know, being down on the bottom rung of the ladder. We're so close, we're all one or two poor mistakes away from that position. And I should not want to be like what Seth had said, you know, I don't want to be that person that is lost and has no place to go, you know, have nowhere to sit, nowhere to eat, nowhere to get clean, nowhere to stay warm, you know, just like David said, I don't want to be that person, I don't want to have to leave Sedalia just because I lost my job, just because I lost my income, just because, you know, I have, I got evicted, my car broke down and everything happened, now I gotta go to Warrensburg just to find a place to stay warm or to stay cool and to get food. I don't want to be that place, you know, like Gary said, Sedalia is a good town, a good city, we need to keep it that way, we need to take care of our own, we need to take care of the people that God has given us to keep an eye on, to watch over and protect. And that's our job, that's our mission, we need to be a city that cares, that's what I have.
Oh, thank you, Jeff.
Denise Aler, seven oh nine East eleven, Sedalia.
Name again.
I'm sorry?
I didn't hear your name.
Denise Aler.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. So I was hearing, you know, across the street and the problems they're dealing with now and the vagrancy and stuff, with the presence of the Mercy Rest Stop, there'd be a place for them to be. While our numbers are not great, like in other cities, praise God, but with this entity, it can be where those lives are gonna change, where our numbers can go down. And there would be a place, and I think there's kind of a misunderstanding of the doors would be closed at six P.M. and then where would they go? And to see of the fact that people would come in and see this as something positive and something good. Well, I lost it, but in Proverbs thirty-one eight nine, it speaks of being a voice for those who cannot speak and for standing up for those who are poor and needy. And that is what there's a call to, that the Lord is putting out so many hearts to answer the call and the need of this city. And when there's things we see that we don't like and might be uncomfortable, pushing through to the other side of where there can be victory and there can be desolateness and community come together, is where we've got to press forward through.
I do trust.
We have it in the record, we can get it to you afterwards. Oh, go ahead, if you want, yeah, if you'd be your address.
Seven oh nine East eleven.
Thank you. All right.
My name is Dawn Williams, two zero four four nine Highway B. I wasn't planning on talking today, but I feel that in the position that I hold, I'm the mental health coordinator at Pettus County Health Center and also sit on the board for Katie Trail. I oversee a criminal diversion program for mental health and substance use. And in that program, I have individuals that are homeless, I have some that are in inadequate housing, I have some that have stable housing with an income that come in. But one thing that we, every one of them run into are the resources that we have available and the availability to get those resources. When I have someone I'm working with and I want them, we're working in one field and they need to get services from another agency, they have to go sometimes clear across town, and that's impossible, people, when they don't have transportation to get there. To have services where an individual who needs a help up can go and sit down and get those services in one place without having to find a ride, without having to walk, without having to ask or beg for something, it allows them the ability to get that help up and out of the situation that they're in. A lot of, a lot of times you get people that, there are some that you can't help, and no matter what you do, they're not ready for that. But if we can help a few better theirselves and get themselves in a better position to where they can be a successful citizen in our, in our community, that's what we need to do. We need a community where we're, we're trying to help the ones that are less fortunate than some of us. And I just ask that, when you look at this ordinance, to look at how hard you're making it if you pass this, for people that need help to get it, if we put all these stipulations in this ordinance, I'm just asking, please really look through it and, and look at it with your heart. If you're trying to open up something, would this ordinance help you do that or is it gonna hinder you? And I just hope that, you know, we have, the school district listed seven hundred McKinney Vento students. These aren't students that are living on the street, these are students that are living with other relatives or friends, family members, or just somebody, a coach. I know a lot of kids that live with their coach. They need the resources, and what we need is a place that can give those resources to them. And I just ask that you please think about that and think about our youth and what we're building in our community, and hope that you guys want to limit the numbers instead of increasing the numbers.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dawn.
My name's John Hopkins, excuse me, N twenty-seven Northeast Data One, Kennesaw, Missouri. I know I'm not part of Sedalia, but I am invested to our church. My question is, in here, it says nothing about what currently available resources, how they're gonna be affected, are they gonna be grandfathered in, are they gonna turn back and have to halt services until they can go through and be vetted? Do you have any idea, Mr. Mayor, what the goal is here?
That's a good question for our, for our work session that we'll go into. Thank you.
Good evening. Michael Johnson, twenty-five twelve Stevenson Avenue, Sedalia. I've moved here a year and a half ago from the East Coast, South Carolina. And while I've been here, I've been a part of our church, Liberty Life Center Church, and I've seen and met a lot of great people and seen what this community does for others, and how we need to come together to do more than what we have been doing. And I've heard a lot of things about Mercy Rest Stop, but I want to challenge you, just the word mercy, just let that sink in. What's the biblical meaning of mercy? It relates to forgiveness or withholding punishment. For example, God showed mercy on us by sending His Son, who sacrificed His own life on the And you know, when I came into this city, and I've seen and I've heard a lot of things about Sedalia, I can't help but think, how much more can Sedalia do? How much more should we be doing? Because it comes as a man, at least for me, integrity, there's morals. What are we teaching young ones? That if you can't afford anything, you lose home, you lose job, you got nowhere to go, sorry, we don't want you here in this town, go to Warrensburg thirty minutes. She said it, I know a lot of youth who are living with other people who aren't family. There has to be resources, there needs to be. We need to show mercy on each other, that despite our own mistakes or things that just happen that may have never been by choice, that we can be a city of light, that we are a city who cares, who has a heart to do greater things than bigger cities are doing. And I really believe in this city, I love this town. I grew up in a very big, big town, Miami, Florida, and I've seen, I've been around a lot of things, and, you know, being here for a year and a half, I love this city. But I challenge you, that if you do believe in the God of the living word, and you let the Mercy Rest Stop and you let other resources happen, I challenge you to watch what He does for this city. And I think you guys will be in awe of how powerful He will bless us as a community. Thank you.
I'm Ann Graff, and I live at fifteen twenty West Broadway here in Sedalia. I know many of you because I have, I have worked and lived in this community for over forty years, I've worked mostly in social services, and in my retirement, I have now serving as the president of the Board of the Embassy. And, you know, I'm not, I'm pretty well acquainted with rules and regulations and government, government rules, I guess. And what I would urge you, I don't, I don't need to speak very long, but I would urge you to be very, very careful. Programs like the Embassy, like the Mercy Rest Stop, are gonna be funded primarily through donations and volunteer work, and if you, if you put too many rules and regulations on those programs that are already in existence and ones that are, that are here to come, it's going to be very, very difficult for people to become involved in those things. It's gonna be very difficult for those programs to remain open because of the rules and regulations and because of the cost of those rules and regulations to those programs. And so I would really urge you to look at the cost and the things that are gonna happen to those programs if you put too many rules in place. Thank you.
My name's Donnie Distal, I'm twenty-four nineteen West First Street. I've been fixing on top and I was setting that Kathleen out there, and I said, I didn't want to talk, but I thought maybe I'd give you a quick background of the, of the open door kitchen down there. You know, Dad passed away in nineteen ninety-six, and anyway, we wanted to do something to, to, you know, and start flyers and what have you. Anyway, make a short story long, we took, walking around the trees, you know, and holding a book up and marching it down and claiming it in the name of Jesus and believing that God would pray those trees, allow us to pray those trees down, call it God or call it God, but Earl Summers, some of you remember Earl, he used to own the fireside here in town. And Earl called me up and he said, Donnie, I hear you're walking around down there with a book holding it up, trying to pray trees down. I said, yeah. He said, I got four bulldozers, you want me to bring one of them down there and push them goddamn trees down? If anybody knows Earl, that's John, they imitate him. He came down and pushed them down. My brother got me hooked up with Bob Wolf, and Bob Wolf was, at that time, was president of Septagon Building Company, he's fifty-seven years old, and he was the kind of guy that could get more done in thirty minutes than I could get done in thirty months. And Bob looked at me and he said, let me call an architect, never seen one work. And he came down there from the upstairs- Well, he said, I want you to go to a friend of mine named Bob Bykirk and tell him that cow story. And little did I know, but Bob knew it, Bob Wolf knew it, Bob Bykirk was Jim Matheson's treasurer for his senate reelection campaign. And within just a few minutes, Mr. Bykirk said, I'm going to make you an appointment with a state senator and I want you to go tell him that cow story. And all of a sudden, I was in front of Jim and I told him that cow story. He said, Donnie, I'm going to make you an appointment with an English teacher.
Three minutes is up, but I'm going to allow you to finish your story because I'm already...
He said, I'm going to make you an appointment with a retiring English teacher at the State Fair Community College and she's still living, she's eighty-three, I think, and I was, lives in Texas, named Faith Lovell. And he said, I want you to go tell that Faith that cow story. And I was in, never met Faith and I told her the cow story. And little did I know, but Matheson knew that Faith Lovell was a grant writer for the State Fair Community College. And if I was to write her a check for what all she's did for that building, she was treasurer of it for probably fifteen years, I had the privilege of overseeing it for about seventeen years and, you know, I'd have to write her a check for twenty-five thousand or higher for all, she done it all for free. Within about a year and a half, Jeff City turned slow, wheels turned slow, but we got a grant to build that. And that building went up mortgage-free. And, you know, it got built and Bob Wolf, with the last board meeting we had, Bob Wolf said, I said, oh, God, it's beautiful. And I said, we got to pray us in a batch of furniture. And he said, well, you old cow trader, he said, you'll probably get it. And so we prayed for the furniture and call it odd or call it God, but Mary McLaughlin was operating the McLaughlin Furniture Store. And Dick Ditzfeld, anybody remembers him, worked there for fifty-five years. And he was driving by one morning and me and Bob Wolf walked out of that place. And the timing had to be perfect. And Dick was driving down Pettis and he stopped the car, I seen a Ford kind of dive down, stop quick. And he said, hey, he said, let me, I've been reading about that, they did a deal in the paper, that I was building it for my heavenly father, naming it after my earthly father. And he had read that and he said, let me go in there and we took him for a tour. Within less than thirty minutes, Mary McLaughlin called me and she said, Donnie, Dick told me about that drunk house. He said, can I come down there? Mary was about this tall and she said, you got to do me one favor. And I said, what's that? She said, you got to allow McLaughlin Brothers Furniture to furnish your drunk house. And that furniture and the pictures that was on the wall, that all come in for free and for fun. Now, granted, some of them got tax credits because I got the grant, okay? But it all come in for free and for fun. So I say all that to say this, trees were prayed down and Earl brought bulldozers and buildings was raised up and Septagon put it up. And many people in the community pitched in to throw money at it. And Earl dozed it down and my, at that time, my cousin Mike Ditzfeld was fire chief in our town. And I went down there and I said, cuz, I got to have the big favor. He said, what's that? I said, hell, it's going to cost a fortune to move all these big old trees. I said, is there any way I could burn them in town? He said, well, not really, but he said, my guys need a training session. And he put the fire trucks on every corner and we'd build a flame down there that it really, and it burned all the trees, saved a lot of money. And we got it all up. And, you know, as time went by, there was, there's been thousands, I mean, literally thousands that's been helped out of that building. But as time went on, it came time to pass it on and we gave it to the open door. And why did we choose the open door? Because there's, at that time, I don't know what it is now, but at that time, there's eighteen different churches on the board of the open door. Why did we want one with eighteen different, so it didn't get one flavor? You know, I don't know what, you know, I love Jesus. I don't know what flavor the Baptist and the Catholic and the Methodist and all them different flavors are, but eighteen, there's a lot of diversity on the open door. So we gave it to them. The only reason I didn't come up here to tell you a history of that, I didn't even aim to talk tonight. But the reason that I shared that was I worked for a company, a news bomb transportation in Hudson, Illinois, okay? Hudson, Illinois, I'm headed back there to get a semi, okay? And to bring it back here and I'm riding an Amtrak. And I got on the Amtrak and I rode down here and it stopped in Jeff City. And I wish to God she was, I got her name and address, but there was a twenty-eight-year-old, beautiful black girl got on our train at Jeff City. And she had a smile that wide. And I call it odd or call it not, but the only place to sit, now, plenty of room in Sedalia, Jeff City, they filled the train in Jeff City. The Amtrak's full and the only seat for the twenty-eight-year-old black law student was next to me. And we rode to St. Louis, I had to get a change, trains and go on to Hudson, Illinois to get the semi. She sat next to me here from Jeff City to Sedalia. I'm telling her about all the miracles that God has done on that corner, from trees being prayed down, building up and all of that. And she had just graduated from law school, that's why the smile was so wide. And she's going to St. Louis, Missouri to start practicing law. And she said, well, you know what the homeless need more than anything? And I said, no. She's successful, she's probably, she's probably, I don't know what she's done, but she's a smart girl, here she was. And she said, what they need more than anything is to place the shower. And I said, a place the shower? I never thought of that. That architect in Wolf's office never thought of that. But the twenty-eight-year-old that was on Amtrak train thought of it. And I said, oh, man, I said, there's another chance for God to demonstrate His omnipotence. I said, lest you and I pray. The reason I shared the trees and Earl Summers, as you can see that, is it odd or is it God? That we prayed for showers on an Amtrak train and I'm in Cameron, Missouri, not even into Sedalia for the last three or four years, and I'm reading about something called the Mercy Rest Stop and they're going to put showers in and I was jumping and shouting and I, you know, I might have been about forty pounds younger then. And I was jumping and shouting and I said, oh, look what God done. I said, all that to say this, Bob Wolf said, you know, someday, you may want to build like motel rooms on the west side of the drunk house. If you look at it, well, ain't it got eight-foot ceilings instead of, I think it is, whatever it was. Because Bob Wolf said, we'll build it to the height, that it'd be easy to build onto the west side of it. So I said, all that to say this, God's alive and well and if we get in a faith position and trust Him, love Him and obey Him, you have to imagine Him saying, hang on, you ain't seen nothing yet. I don't know why I wanted to share that, but...
Anybody else? Everybody had a chance to speak that wants to speak? Okay. Going once, going twice? All right. Jason, if you could go ahead and call for the reading of the letters that were received, we're going to read those in the record.
First one to Mayor Andrew Dawson, members of the city council, city administrator Shaw, community development director John Simmons, regarding proposed changes to planning and zoning ordinance. Due to an extended stay out of state, I'll be unable to attend upcoming meetings regarding proposed changes to Sedalia's planning and zoning ordinance. Our concern has been previously expressed and documented in correspondence distributed to city officials, the planning and zoning commissioners, and a copy of that correspondence is attached. The concern remains focused on potential location of a Mercy Rest Stop type facility within the Katy Depot neighborhood and the subsequent impact affecting public safety of business associates, visitors and staff, as well as creation of an adverse public image diminishing the mission that the historic Katy Depot fulfills not only locally, but to a national and even international audience. I urge your prudent action to ensure that these concerns are seriously considered and safeguards put in place to secure safety and public profile of the historic Katy Depot. And that was from Deborah Bierman, executive director, Sedalia Heritage Foundation, Katy Depot.
Thank you.
The other one, dear members of Sedalia City Council, I would like the attached be forwarded to council persons and documented in the city's public hearing being held Monday, January thirty, twenty twenty-three. As I am traveling, I'm unable to attend in person. Living outside or in substandard housing complicates efforts to treat illnesses and injuries and the outcomes are disastrous. Those living in the margins and in poverty suffer preventable diseases at three to six times the rates experienced by others, have higher death rates and have dramatically lower life expectancy by an average of thirty years. Services provided by local service providers as well as emergency homeless services decrease psychiatric emergency services admittance at Bothell Regional Health Center by engaging the vulnerable population in community-based crisis intervention. I genuinely believe that city administration has the community's best interest in mind that there is a solution beyond implementation of a transitional services ordinance that is loaded with bias and underlying discrimination against the vulnerable population that our area nonprofits and service providers continue to deliver every day. As a member of the community who served on the Transitional Services Committee, worked for a local nonprofit and lives locally, I think that there is potential for compromise. The compromise could be facilitated by bringing representatives from local service providers like Open Door Service Center, CASA, Pettis County Health Center, Pettis County Community Partnership, to name a few, to the table for a conversation to discuss ongoing efforts and/or trends seen while serving the community. I would encourage council members to explore definitions from HUD and the Fair Housing Act when opening discussion pertaining to special use permits that could be detrimental to the future of nonprofit organization and service providers who currently exist in our community today. The Transitional Services Committee did not discuss a request that special use permits be included in the transitional ordinance. This was foisted on the committee by the city's attorney, who was supposed to be facilitating discussion, not crafting legislation. Pettis County service providers have been successfully serving missions in Sedalia for many decades. I'm certain that if the city administrators and council persons were to offer suggestions or positive means of collaboration with nonprofits and directors, service providers and nonprofit boards would be open to the conversation. I am proud of the community that we live in, I am proud of the opportunities that we owe to my children by this community. I want to be proud that we as a community can come together with differences of opinion to provide resources to every friend, neighbor, family member and coworker, knowing that our futures are unknown and any of us may need services at any point in time. Best regards, Samantha Gilpin, twelve oh one, South Montgomery.
That's the two that I have. Do we have a third, John? The third letter was the same letter that Debbie Bierman introduced at the previous public hearing in October? Okay. All right. Well, having heard no further public comment, we'll go ahead and close this public hearing. So next time on the agenda was the work session, we're now about roughly an hour and a half into this. Council, would you like to go ahead and, what's your pleasure, would you like to go ahead and begin a work session or would you like to go ahead and postpone this until next week?
I wouldn't, if we're going to continue, I wouldn't mind taking about a five-minute break.
Where's everyone else at? What are we hoping to accomplish? Just kind of, I mean, any questions, any input that you guys have for the ordinance?
I would appreciate it being postponed so that I can be there in person, please.
What'd you say?
She wasn't following in person.
Say it again, Rhanna.
I would appreciate that if we do a work session, that it be postponed so that I could actually be there in person. I'm still in the hospital with my dad.
That's fair.
Yeah, that's fair. I think we've...
Please.
Do you have a motion on the floor to postpone it?
I'm going to be there in the first meeting. So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I might again make a suggestion with respect to the information that we heard this evening and again, making sure that you have adequate time to review the documentation. What I would recommend is that you would direct staff to bring this back to you for your March sixth meeting, okay? And then I was looking at the calendar, so if it was March sixth, to give you two weeks of time, to give you two weeks of time to review the information, we could have a packet delivered to you with staff report and some supporting documentation and additional information in that by February the twentieth. So you have two weeks to review it prior to your work session and that way if you have any questions, we do that. And hearing some of the comments this evening, one of the things I thought might be helpful would be to develop almost like a frequently asked question item and so we could put a summary of that in there and kind of say, you know, these are questions and comments here, this is how this should work under existing ordinance along with information about, you know, any additional thoughts on potential amendments or so. So, I feel that I'd be appropriate for a successful work session.
My question is, is there a motion going to vote on this on the March sixth?
No. So we can, that is council's question, but we need to discuss it further and we can move it, I mean, we can, it'll be on there for consideration on the sixth, but we can always postpone that to the next meeting, which would be March second, second Monday and...
Yeah, fine. So where's the work session? Are you saying the work session is just a regular general council meeting?
Yes.
I'd rather see us have a dedicated work session for this particular topic.
Would you say something, Jack?
Yes, I said, I'd rather, I agree with Steve.
Dedicated work session? Yeah. So like a special meeting? Yeah?
Yeah. Needs to be public, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, please.
Okay, so we will...
Staff want to come back with a good date, a couple of days of date.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that you have, you know, that you have time to review the documentation and we have, you know, time to put it together for you. Again, you know, to do it for February sixth, it'll turn around and literally have to get done like in two days.
So why don't we get the dates and then we can consider that February sixth.
To consider the dates since February sixth.
Is everybody good with that?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a motion to...
The old people have heard tonight, the main thing I heard is, we don't want Mercy Stop, but we got to let the public know that we want this, but it has to be uniform and such. But most people were saying, we feel the council don't want this and that's not true.
We do want Mercy Stop, it's just, we got to make food so it will work so the people can invest in it.
We've got a lot of work to do in that particular area.
We're investing in something that's going to be found.
Is there a motion on the floor to proceed with that one?
My turn.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. All right. We'll be back next February sixth.
Thank you.
Yes, please.
Okay. So we will...
Staff want to come back with a good date, or a couple of days of date?
Yeah, I want to make sure that, you know, that you have time to review the documentation and we have, you know, time to pull everything together for you. Again, you know, to do it for February sixth, to turn around, because literally they have to get done like in two days.
So why don't we, why don't we get the dates and then we can consider that February sixth?
To consider the dates since February sixth?
Is everybody good with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Do I have a motion to...
The old people have heard tonight. The main thing I heard is, we don't want Mercy Stop, but we got to let the public know that we want this, that it has to be uniform and, and such. But most people were saying, we feel the council don't want this and that's not true.
We, we do want Mercy Stop, it's just, we got to make moves so that it will, so the people can invest in it.
We've, we've, we've got a lot of work to do.
People are investing in something that's going to be found.
Is there a motion on the floor to proceed without law? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. All right. We'll be back next February sixth.
Thank you. Do we need a motion to adjourn?
We do.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All right, thank you. Your turn, Fred. Yep, your turn.